Let's please stand for the invocation to be led by Living Hope Church Pastor, Mr. Andrew Crook.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, those that are here. Just wanted to say thank you for the opportunity, real quick. Thank you for your work and your service to our great city. Our city wouldn't be here without great leaders through the years, but also great leaders today. So, thank y'all very much for what y'all do. Normally, I would stay for the whole meeting, just because of how thrilled I am for the opportunity, but I have to go and prepare to meet our mayor in a fourth grade basketball game. So, we have practice at seven, so I'll have to scoot out a little bit early. But with that, I just wanted to say thank y'all once again for the opportunity, and let us pray. Lord Jesus, our gracious heavenly Father, thank you for allowing us to meet here today. Lord, we know there's a few things that are going on in our community and in our city, and Lord, we just pray for wisdom and strength. And we know Proverbs nine and verse 10 tells us that "The fear of the Lord is the beginning of wisdom," and that "Knowledge of the Holy One is understanding." So, Lord, let us first start with respecting you, because only a fool says in his heart that there is no God. Lord Jesus, we pray that you give these men and women understanding and wisdom today. Help them lead, help them understand, help them learn, help them ask. Lord Jesus, because you also say in James, chapter one, and verse five, that "If any lacks wisdom, you should ask God, who gives generously, without finding fault." Lord, as we seek wisdom today for the things that are going to be addressed, Lord, I pray that wisdom flows upon this council, that you would give them favor, and, Lord, to answer every question and to find every answer. And we thank you. We give you all the praise and all the glory in Jesus' mighty name, and we all say, amen.
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank Pastor, Flash Coach. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Councilmember Nealon.
Here.
Councilmember Penny.
Here.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Here.
Councilmember Swain.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Before we get to the minutes, Police Chief Hammond has a presentation to make. Slash modeling.
Modeling.
Yeah, absolutely, our officers.
So, you may have noticed, we have a new uniform for patrol guys, patrol officers. Obviously, the first of all, the color difference. The biggest thing is vests. There've been studies after studies that have shown that officers should wear a belt like me over time, develop back problems and other ailments. Obviously, I don't have many things on my belt, because I'm not wet all the time. But patrol officer like Justin, you figure all these things on his belt in a car for patrol hours, that becomes a problem for your back and other things on your body. So, we did a lot of research on these outer carrier vests, and we decided to go with this brand. And as you can see, all the tools that he normally have on his belt are now up there on his vest. And the reason why we switched the uniform color is because frankly, the vests that were great. And through votes and feedback, all the guys said they had liked the better. So, another good about this vest is it has a zipper. So, in the middle of summer, guys, guys come in, want to do reports, they take this thing off and set it aside, cool off. Whereas before, the vest is underneath your shirt. So, once you have it on, it's on. So, very proud of these. Took a lot. It's been going on for, what, a year or so, or more, trying to determine which one was best for our officers, and this is the one that we went with. And so far, everybody loves it.
I'm looking. Absolutely.
Anyway, you see anything around town? Do you have it already? So, I just wanted to... You see it? Why does that guy have a blue shirt on? That's why. Because they're the best. The guys like me that have office jobs, that don't want to wear a uniform, we'll just keep this same setup. And they can, months or years from now, they may switch. I don't know. But for now, this is our official patrol uniform. Any questions?
Do you have any to turn around, please?
Yeah.
You want me to spin?
Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. Very sharp.
Do you have a copy of the minutes of last month's regular meeting, October 28th? Are there any corrections, comments?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve?
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Motion to approve.
Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding fixed asset disposal. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled. A resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to remove and dispose of certain fixed assets from the City of Bamburin's fixed asset inventory by sealed bid auction or other methods authorized under the law and for other purposes. Whereas, the City of Bamburin has certain fixed assets on its fixed asset inventory list, which are obsolete and or beyond repair, and are no longer cost-effective so as to no longer be needed by the city. And whereas, after an inventory of fixed assets, it is therefore recommended by our state auditor that said item or items be removed from the city's fixed asset inventory and disposed of by sealed bid auction or as otherwise authorized under ACA 1454-302. Now, therefore, being resolved by the City Council of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to remove the following asset or assets from the fixed asset inventory and to dispose of same by sealed bid auction or other such methods authorized under the law. Department, police department, amount fourteen thousand, six hundred thirty-five dollars. Description of inventory, two thousand seven Ford F-150 pickup truck. VIN number one, FTRF12W77NA83601. Control number PD633.
Chief, got maybe some info about what we're doing here, the situation?
Yeah, this is a truck that was involved in an accident, and insurance said it was a total loss, so they paid us proceeds for it. And we said, you realize it, fill it back down. Luckily, the fire truck that the officer hit was a total, so whoever picks it. That's what it is. This is a total light truck.
Silver lining.
Yeah.
Now, wait. You're saying you're having your police guys run over the fire guys?
They will be out of lane. It was our guys calling, clearly.
We've had a city council member do that before, too.
Those red trucks, it's hard to see them.
It was a big truck, the pickup truck.
Still red.
That's all it is.
Do I hear a motion? A motion?
Second.
Second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Penny.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Eyes have it, I therefore declare the resolution, which is number?
Eleven dash one dash two thousand nineteen.
Eleven dash one dash two thousand nineteen is passed. It's a very fire department, police department centric evening, everything we're doing. The next item on the agenda is a resolution to properly remove certain police department firearms. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled. A resolution to authorize the mayor and city clerk to remove and dispose of certain property from the City of Bamburin's inventory by sealed bid auction or other methods authorized under the law and for other purposes. Whereas, the City of Bamburin has certain property on its inventory list, which is impractical for use and are no longer cost-effective, so as to no longer be needed by the city. And whereas, after an inventory of this property, it is therefore recommended by city staff that said items be removed from the city's inventory destined to be traded to Franklin Armory for more practical rifles of equal value and at no additional cost to the city. Now, therefore, being resolved by the City Council of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to remove the following from the city's inventory and to dispose of same by sealed bid auction or other such methods authorized under the law. Department, police department, amount fifteen hundred dollars. Description of inventory, H and K G thirty-six C, machine gun serial number eighty-five dash zero zero one zero six six. Police department, one thousand five hundred dollars. H and K G thirty-six C, machine gun serial number eighty-five dash zero zero one zero six seven. Police department, one thousand five hundred dollars. H and K G thirty-six C, machine gun serial number eighty-five dash zero zero one zero six eight. Police department, one thousand five hundred dollars. H and K G thirty-six C, machine gun serial number eighty-five dash zero zero one zero six nine. Police department, one thousand five hundred dollars. H and K G thirty-six C, machine gun serial number eighty-five dash zero zero one zero seven zero.
Normally, we do this for fixed assets, but these are not fixed assets.
That's correct. They are not fixed assets. We bought these machine guns with federal asset forfeiture money, and since we're trading them in, just to satisfy the power to be through the federal government, the lady of him took in contact with, recommended we do a resolution, just to show that this is how we're getting rid of them, because we're not taking in any money. It was just a trade across, trade across, trade across the board. And so, she said this will satisfy this, along with the way we traded them. This will satisfy the requirements that they have, and how we get rid of our assets that we buy through federal asset forfeiture money. And these guns are just, they're not practical for us. They're fully automated machine guns, and the ones that we got are practical, that we can use for our SWAT team.
Are they, are we getting five for five?
Yes. Yes, trade across, trade. The machine guns are probably, the gun experts here, probably worth more money. I don't know, but the ones that we got are equally as good as a rifle, and it's a fair trade.
Do you have any idea what Franklin Armory does with their guns you buy back?
They will, the one, these machine guns that they will get, they will sell to collectors or whomever, but that process, of course, will be vetted through how they sell guns. Of course, they have to follow certain guidelines on how they sell them. But this relieves us from, takes them off the books in our name, takes us off the books, and gives it all to them.
Motion to approve? A motion? Second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Penny.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Eyes have it, I therefore declare the resolution, which is number?
Eleven dash two dash two thousand nineteen.
Eleven dash two dash two thousand nineteen is passed. Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding employee Christmas bonus. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled. A resolution approving a one hundred dollar, one hundred dollar Christmas bonus to all full-time non-elected city employees who have one full year of service. Whereas, the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, has paid a Christmas bonus to its salaried employees in the past, and whereas, the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, wishes to continue this practice, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, all full-time, non-elected city employees who have one full year of service, shall be paid a one hundred dollar, one hundred dollar bonus for Christmas.
How many employees do we have? Hundred and sixteen.
One hundred and sixteen.
Yeah.
I'm liking what you're doing there.
Okay. You have a motion? Second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Penny.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Eyes have it, I therefore declare the resolution, number?
Eleven dash three dash two thousand nineteen.
Eleven dash three dash two thousand nineteen is passed. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance to amend the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations. I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the City Council for the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled. An ordinance amending the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations. Whereas, the Bamburin Civil Service Commission has identified the need to amend the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations to reflect current state laws, and whereas Arkansas Code fourteen fifty-one three zero one B one B, concerning rules and regulations governing the police and fire departments of its respective cities, amends the law concerning age of eligibility, and whereas the proposed amendments herein promote hiring qualified applicants and protecting the fairness and independence of the hiring process. And whereas, the Bamburin Civil Service Commission has voted to approve the following amendments to the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations. Now, therefore, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Bamburin, Arkansas, that section one, the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations are hereby amended as follows. Section two, Article three, section one and section two shall read, "Beginning October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, these civil service regulations shall apply to and be effective and enforced as to all uniformed employees and/or certified personnel in the police department working full-time in the existing or future positions of captain, lieutenant, sergeant, corporal, patrol officer, detective, and animal control officer. Dispatchers hired before October twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, shall remain under civil service regulations. Any person holding the position of part-time police officer two who wishes to be appointed to any full-time patrol officer position within this police department shall be subject to the procedure for appointment as set out in Article four herein. Section two, these civil service regulations shall be effective and be enforced as to all uniformed and non-uniformed employees of the fire department working in full or part-time in the existing or future positions of deputy chief, assistant chief, battalion chief, captain, driver, operator, lieutenant, or firefighter. Section three, Article four, section one shall read, 'A person must be at least eighteen years of age and must not have arrived at thirty-five years of age to be eligible for appointment to any position on the fire department.' Section four, in Article seven, section two shall read, 'For the police department, a score of not less than sixty points of a possible one hundred points on the civil service written examination must be achieved in order for the applicant to pass the civil service written examination and to be considered for promotion. In order to pass the police department's performance evaluation, the applicant cannot have one or more of those not meet expectations or standards scored on his or her performance evaluation. In order to be eligible for promotion, a minimum score of sixty points must be also attained on the oral review board score. The combined score of the written examination and oral review will determine the ranking of the officer on the promotion list.' Section five, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of a section or any provision or part of a provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holdings shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent, the provisions herein too are declared to be severable."
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules? We go to a second reading?
No.
A motion?
Second.
All in favor of the motion? Eyes have it. Motion carried. Ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by title for a second.
An ordinance amending the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations.
Do we have a motion to further suspend the rules? Go to a third and final reading?
Motion.
A motion? Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Before we declare a motion carried, ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance amending the Bamburin Civil Service Rules and Regulations.
Mayor, I just noticed this. I'm sorry, I didn't realize. But in this, section two? Is that, should that next section two part, is that? See how we're amending?
Where is, yeah, it's section one, section two. This is the one.
And the other question I had was that, had there been any dispatchers hired after the October twenty-eighth?
I was wondering that, too, if we need to. That was the date of the Civil Service Commission. What was the significance of that date?
This is, that's when they met.
While we're interrupted, the only question I was going to ask is, we don't have an emergency clause in this here, but it does say October twenty-eighth. Can it be October twenty-eighth?
Well, in my opinion, anybody hired between the time of October then and to the actual legal effect, this ultimate mental legal effect, would be subject to the Civil Service Regulations.
Which would not be for how many days?
Thirty days.
Thirty more days. So, I don't know if we're going to do any hiring between now and then, but do we want to do an emergency clause or anything, just so there's not that?
I don't know if there's a basis for an emergency clause.
Because there's not, there's not a current position.
I catch you.
Okay. So, to answer my question, and then, in reality, the effective date, these regulations is going to be thirty days from today.
That would be my opinion.
So, we could amend this to say in some group? Or just leave it?
I think we'll just leave it, because they approved it with that date, which probably would have been better for them to approve it and send it to us for final approval, because this is the effective date. It does require an ordinance to be, I noted in your letter that you had indicated you didn't know if it was necessary to do this, but it is. So, you did the right thing.
Is there any other thing to add? This is, there's good information in your packet, just about the various ages and around the area.
Yeah, we don't agency that I can find anywhere that. We had to get between one to be a dispatcher. We want to make it eighteen, and also that we have to, that we don't have to go through the whole hiring process, that we do that, to hire a dispatcher, hire one, need one. And that's what we want to do.
Do I hear a motion?
Are any of these, are any of these rules going to affect any of the, potentially any of the other positions that are noted in here? I know the primary purpose behind it was the dispatcher, but it also makes references to assistant chief, battalion, and
No, no, no. All that's
Those that are employed, remain under the rule.
Unless you want that police chief in there, but we don't, no thanks. No, all that, all that remains the same.
It's non-uniform.
No, it's police officers, firefighters, battalion chiefs, detectives, corporals, everyone except for
Everyone but the chiefs?
Yes.
And now the dispatchers?
Dispatchers, yes.
Motion to approve? Do you have a motion? Will the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Penny.
Aye.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Eyes have it, therefore declare the ordinance number?
Eighteen dash two zero one nine.
Eighteen dash two zero one nine has passed. Next item on the agenda is a financial report. You have copies of the report. The clerk, please read the name.
One mil, one million, two hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars, fifty-four cents.
Motion to pay the bills. A motion? Wait a second. Motion in a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Clear the motion carried.
Question, didn't we used to also get a tape of the cash balances? It seems like somebody over on that side asked a question about the balance, that one being higher or lower than it normally was.
Oh, and then Swain asked that a few months ago, but it was, that tape has always been extinguished. Always been extinguished.
Next item on the agenda are the department reports. You have copies of those reports, the departments. If you have any questions, you can answer those. If not, you can file that, submit. For miscellaneous and general discussion, we have a street closing request. Talk around the back. This is for the Bamburin High School Baseball Booster Club. We have a five K fundraiser coming up on December seventh. Anything to add?
I do not. Hopefully, we can get everybody to join, if you're not. Everybody needs a little exercise in their life, especially the police force. And the fire department. The police force is going to help us with the streets, so I can't, I'll say nice things about it.
Do you have any other questions? Do we have a motion to approve of the request? Second. A motion in a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. I wanted to, before we do the further business, I wanted to mention the economic development grant. It was a good article in Press Argus, if you all saw it this weekend, that has to do with the Port project and study that's been ongoing, and just all those efforts that we've been undertaking for a few years now. We have the opportunity to contribute to a grant that will essentially be part of this four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project for that area down there. It's an eighty-twenty grant, eighty percent from the EBA, twenty percent will be a local match from the local entities. That's Bamburin, that's Crawford County, that's Sebastian County, and the city of Fort Smith. So far, the other entities have all approved and said that they would, they would give that money for this study that's going to be ongoing. And what the study does is, it does a lot of environmental permitting, it does preliminary plans, no rise certificates, other engineering studies for utilities. And so, this is a four hundred and fifty thousand dollar project that we can access about three hundred and sixty thousand, I think, in grant funds if they get the local match. And so, the way it comes out is to twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars over two years, which essentially the city, we can do that anyway without getting board approval over two years. But I wanted to bring that to y'all, just to get your thoughts and opinions. We had a question in the past about what's the recent happenings with this project, and this is something that, if this project is to carry on, we have prospects, this is going to have to be done, this is a really good potential money that we can get from the feds. So, I would recommend spending this money over the next two years.
Didn't we have that guy that's responsible for that in this area, here, that talked to us?
Oh, yeah. We had, we had a lot of, we rolled out the red carpet, we had meetings, we had an expert come in and talk about all the potential, and he has a lot of contacts, and it's because of those contacts that now we're meeting with prospects and going to dinner and trying to
What's your feeling? Do you feel good about this?
I do, at this point, I still do. This is, this is further along again. We're making progress. We're making progress.
It's almost too good to be true.
I don't know. Once we get, once we get a little closer, maybe, but I do think it's a worthy investment. If you remember, years ago, we used to give forty thousand dollars to this Y and Lita slash Rita Board for Economic Development. That's been reduced to twenty thousand in the past couple years, and so now this is, this will be another eleven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for the next two years.
Has the, I was thinking I had read in the paper, when they were talking about it, that I think it was Sebastian County, maybe, the city basically had not taken any action on it yet, and so, they haven't had?
They have, yeah. I talked to the judge, and they have. They've actually appropriated the money. The way that we'll do it, it's going to be in our budget that we approve at the end of next month, so we'll have it appropriated at that point. But again, this is, this is something that, for the next two years, it'll be twenty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. That's each entity that's going to be contributing. For this project over here, which I think is a great commitment of regionalism for over the river, because this project's here, but they understand the significance and the impact that it can have across the river for them. So, it's a good, it's a good regional project.
What's the probability? Because it says in the paper, could get four.
Yeah, we actually may not. So, if we don't, then that money won't be allocated, if we don't get the grants, just like the
Who has their ear to ground, so you can contact them and find out?
We're working with Western Arkansas Planning and Development. They're administering it for us and all that. Any other questions?
All right, we have a meeting Monday night.
We are having a meeting Monday night. We've handed you the proposed budget for 2020, so look that over, write down questions. I've highlighted a few things, and then we'll meet next Monday, go over that. And then hopefully, the idea is, our normal meeting is on December twenty-third. The Quorum Court has already declared that a holiday, because it's a Monday. that a holiday, because it's a Monday, and so that's part of what I'm asking here, do we wanna also take that as a holiday? If we do that, we need to meet the previous week, which would be the sixteenth of December. So we have a study session next Monday, add the week off, and then the next Monday, we would have the regular city council meeting to address and adopt the budget for twenty twenty.
Are you asking that we want to have the twenty-third as a holiday?
Yes, sir.
I think that's...
Do we have a motion? Let's take, let's do a motion for that, just for...
I'm gonna get one.
Okay. We have a motion?
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passed. Um, a couple of things, we, uh, we actually did receive the volunteer community of the year again, for two thousand nineteen, and we really appreciate Jennifer on her hard work, talking to the various, uh, members of our community that volunteered, and, um, that was something that, you know, part of that, the narrative that we filled out, it asked, has the community gone through anything extreme, weather or whatever, and so, we got to talk about all the things that we had been through, and all the opportunities for volunteerism, and how the community came together and helped each other, and so, I really think our response to those disasters really meant a long way to receiving that. I think there was only eight, seven or eight in the whole state that received that. So that's a great thing for our community, um, this shows how we come together and help each other and volunteer. Took a picture today for, with the Rotary Club, who donated some money up to the Veterans Park, and so, just another example of a group that, that gives and works and serves, and, um, just really, really thankful, thankful for them.
Yeah, but I'm still a little bitter that they changed the rules and it took us out of contention for the, for the volunteer community of the decade.
When was that? I don't know how...
Three or four years ago. Maybe they changed it back.
Uh, any other comments, pub, from the public?
I think downtown really looks nice, all the lights, that's pretty...
Looks really good. They have the courthouse lighting the evening, two weeks?
The seventh.
This Saturday?
Next.
Next Saturday?
The seventh, seventh. In conjunction with, well, he left, but the jingle and mingle, the race and courthouse lighting that evening.
It's on a Friday.
Saturday.
You'll notice in those, in the budget, the numbers that are coming in, um, I think our downtown has a big thing to do with the numbers being hired for the past, and so, we hope that trend continues and get some good businesses like Allman Dodson down there, and get some people to spend some money, Mr. Petty, and everybody down there, so.
Have we heard anything else about the new grant that we got for down there?
Uh, we're still working through that, um, we're, we're gonna be tweaking the plan a little bit and working with, um, our architect and downtown group, um, because, you know, this is a significant project, if you remember, we got about five hundred thousand dollar grant, um, to do some new streetscape downtown, some landscaping, irrigation, sidewalks, utilities, um, and now we're starting to look at that and say, okay, this is gonna cause some, some disruption in the downtown. Uh, we wanna make sure that we work with the, with the merchants and owners and make sure that, um, we do it the right way, um, but we're still sort of in a planning state of...
Right out my minutes, or my notes about disruptions and, and calls about the disruptions. My project, so.
That's just been smoothly.
Yeah.
It's temporary, it's temporary inconvenience, that's why, probably we have to look at it. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn it all? If anybody wants to move to adjourn?
Go to have.
All right. A motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.